This meeting has come to order. Today is Tuesday, October 10, 2017. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Mayor Protem, do you have any introductions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Our invocation today would be by Rabbi Adele Plotkin from Beth Thora, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by me.
I think I'll take you up on your comment there, and I will include that it's the season of joy. And so, I am joyful to be here. Honorable Mayor Obergeis, council members, staff, community members, and friends. Once more we gather here to address the business of governing our community in full recognition of the challenges facing us. Some are constant, and some are constantly changing. Both on our individual levels and on government levels, we are met with challenges of domestic violence, noise pollution, and infrastructure maintenance. How much more complicated are the infrastructure challenges for the governing? Yet, it is clear that you, our leaders, are working on those needs as well as continuing with the Airport Master Plan progress. You knew I had to say that, right? Therefore, we pray that you, our leaders, will be blessed with wisdom, understanding, and creativity to successfully deal with those very challenges. May you be mindful to protect with compassion and respect the people you serve and the environment we all live in with deep caring for all, even when you are trying to control the disrespect some community members display to their neighborhoods as addressed in the agenda today. May you also see your way to be mindful of the resources at hand that need to be protected so that they will be available for use, not only by us now, but also by future generations. In affirmation of these fervent prayers, let each of us now, in our own way, agree, "So may it be."
Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to one I, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Obergeis.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Lizelle is excused. Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
We have a quorum, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. City Mayor, do you have any announcements?
No, sir.
Okay. Want to welcome everybody today to this voting session, and we've got a pretty full schedule, it looks like. A number of proclamations, presentations, and then moving into the agenda. We'll get into the regular agenda. You'll be off. Public will be given an opportunity to speak on the various topics that we have, and try and keep your comments brief, not over five minutes. And if you get close to the five-minute time period, I'll give you a warning. Move on to proclamations. 7A.
Item A, Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2017. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of control in an intimate relationship where one person uses coercion and violence to gain power and control over his or her partner. And whereas domestic violence includes not only physical abuse, but also mental, emotional, and financial abuse, isolation, and sexual violence. And whereas intimate partner violence does not discriminate. And whereas nearly 20 people per minute are physically abused by an intimate partner annually in the U.S. And whereas the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence reports 107 women, men, and children were murdered in domestic violence-related homicides in 2015. And whereas one in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year. And whereas one in three teens experienced sexual or physical abuse or threats from a boyfriend or girlfriend. And whereas it is estimated that the cost of intimate partner violence is $8.3 billion annually. And whereas by working together in this community, we can break the cycle of violence. Now therefore, Harry Obergeis, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so much for again recognizing and approving this proclamation. As stated in the proclamation, domestic violence is a serious crime. It's not biased by race, religion, sexual orientation, gender, financial, or community status. Public awareness, education, and community involvement are essential to supporting victims of domestic violence. When city leadership recognizes and supports this, you, as our leaders, are taking the action to support our citizens, and we are creating a coordinated community effort which creates a safer and healthier environment for all of us. Thank you again for your support.
On to item B.
Item B, Proclaiming Shop Prescott Start Here Day.
Calm on down. All right. Welcome, everyone. Nice to have you here, and welcome to all of you today. Shop Prescott Start Here, October 10, 2017. Whereas local retailers and service businesses are the engines of economic activity and prosperity, spending their revenue at a wide variety of other businesses. And whereas local businesses, including boutiques, stores, restaurants, hotels, automotive dealerships, service business, and educational institutions, all have contribution to our local economy. And whereas local brick-and-mortar businesses have made a significant investment in the City of Prescott and will continue to do so. And whereas many of these same local businesses are impacted by online retailers that extract money from the local economy and leave little behind. And whereas... Sorry, lost my spot. Here we are. And whereas local businesses build strong communities by sustaining vibrant town centers, linking neighbors, and a series of economic and social relationships, and contributing to local causes. And whereas every dollar spent locally cultivates many times, supporting local job creation and tax revenue to support high-quality public service and schools for Prescott. And whereas the City of Prescott is partnering with individual businesses and business organizations to promote shopping locally throughout the year. Now therefore, Harry B. Obergeis, Mayor of the City of Prescott of Arizona, does hereby proclaim October 10, 2017, as Shop Prescott Start Here. Congratulations. And you know what? It would be really good, John, if everybody introduced themselves and maybe tell how they are affiliated with the Shop Prescott Start Here.
Thank you, Billy. And just to let everyone know, Billy is actually a member of the Shop Prescott Committee as well. So, thank you, Billy, for your service on this group. And I will start over here. Do you want to just hand out the microphone?
My name is Bill McClary. I own several businesses here in town, and I'm president of the Downtown Partnership.
Amora Cianciola with the Haas Yampa Inn, and president of the Prescott Area Hospitality Association.
Tim Graham of Whispering Pines Bed and Breakfast, and representing the B&amp;B Association.
Sanford Cohen from Arizona's Hometown Radio Group, headquartered in Prescott. And I'm here representing as board chair of the Prescott Chamber of Commerce.
Kendall Jasperz, I am here from the Prescott Downtown Partnership.
I'm Kelly Saldwettel, part of the Daily Courier, also VP of PDP, and on the board of the Prescott Chamber.
Good afternoon. My name is Sherri Heiney, and I'm the president and CEO of the Prescott Chamber of Commerce.
And I am Billy Orr, and happy to be on this committee. So, thank you all. And make sure you shop Prescott, and you start here. If you have a business, or whatever you do, make sure that this is in your window. This is actually on the back of my Suburban. So, put one on your car.
It will move on to 7C.
Sixth Annual Hope Fest Arizona Festival with a Purpose.
All right. It's my privilege to read the Hope Fest Arizona's Love is the Evidence Day, October 14, 2017 proclamation. Whereas in six years, Hope Fest Arizona has quickly grown to be one of the largest community outreach festivals in northern Arizona. And whereas on October 14, 2017, the beautiful Prescott Courthouse Plaza will once again come alive as guests enjoy local and national recording artists, guest speakers, a multitude of vendors and services, a car and bike show, and a free family fun zone geared for all ages. And whereas, most importantly, Hope Fest will again reach out to our community with the Hope Serves Family Resource Fair to impact the immediate needs of our veterans, the hungry, the homeless, and those affected by domestic violence, giving a hand up to improve our community for all who live here. And whereas, guests can pack the truck with donations of cans, foods, new cold-weather gear, coats, socks, sleeping bags, and other winter provisions, so all will know the gift of warmth this winter. Whereas Hope Fest Arizona and the Hope Serves Family Resource Fair is a free public event because of incredible support from local businesses and organizations. And whereas the Fostering Hope Award will be announced during a special mainstage presentation to honor the work of a local charity. And whereas, Hope Fest Arizona 2017 is dedicated to all veterans, past, present, fallen, and families with a very special opening ceremony, veteran tribute at 11:30 a.m. And whereas, Hope Fest is making a tangible difference in the lives of our neighbors while showing that love is the evidence. Now therefore, I, Harry B. Obergeis, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 14, 2017, as the Sixth Annual Hope Fest Arizona's Love is the Evidence Day. Congratulations. Would you like to say anything?
I'm Wade Williams from Post 140, but I am one of many veterans in our community that love Hope Fest, and we hope that it not only reaches our veterans, but all those who love veterans also.
Thank you, honored counsel. Thank you, City of Prescott. We are so honored to be able to use the Courthouse Plaza to do this amazing community outreach, and that you've made it available so that we can connect with our neighbors and provide services. But the family fun zone is amazing, too, for kids that might not be able to afford to go do those kinds of things. We love to have that down there. We have two different kinds of people that come to Hope Fest. One, looking for services and connections. The other, looking for fun, as well as what's going on great here in our town that I don't know about. Where can I volunteer my time? Where can I donate my money? What do I need to know about that's going on here? We are so happy that Carry the Load, a veterans' family organization, national organization, is coming here to speak, and along with so many others. And please come by that day. It is amazing what the spirit is on that particular plaza. And we do love our veteran family. Our particular family lost a Purple Heart hero this year. And it was possible that Hope Fest was not going to happen. But we dug down deeper and really thought, what does a warrior go through? Sleep deprivation, horrible food. Although my son would tell you, "But I got to camp every day for eight months." And he loved it. So, we dug down deeper, and we put our armor on, and we decided that our community needed to be loved on, whether we're going through a heartache or not. So, our amazing team, because this event has to be more than one or two people to be the size that it is, that our group has wrapped around us, and our community is carrying this forward. So, we thank you for this. We thank you for this proclamation.
Okay, we'll move on to proclamations. Or correction, presentations.
West Yavapai Guidance Clinic to provide an update on the Crisis Stabilization Unit.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Laura Norman with West Yavapai Guidance Clinic. And I appreciate the five minutes, and I've been instructed to keep it five minutes or less, Laura, over and over, so I shall do that. I appreciate this opportunity. You guys have heard from us in the last couple of years about this project, the Crisis Stabilization Unit, what we refer to as the Missing Link in Local Mental Health Center. And we wanted to come share with council the data so far, the progress, the impact on the community, and really be accountable and transparent to our community, the whole community, even though the project is in Prescott Valley. So, I didn't bring a PowerPoint. I do have brochures, so. On the back is a map where you will find directions and the address to the CSU. Before I give you some data on this project, I would like to recognize in the audience Arlene Allen. She is one of our volunteer board members on the West Yavapai Guidance Clinic Foundation Board of Directors. We cannot do what we do at our foundation, nor at our nonprofit service provider agency, the clinic, without volunteer leadership. So, whenever I get a chance to point that out, I like to do so and thank our volunteers. We are the largest nonprofit provider of mental health, crisis, and addiction services in this community. We serve all of western Yavapai County, and we serve about 7,000 people a year. As I mentioned, the Missing Link, what that meant, and what we tried to explain to people is that if you or someone in your family or a neighbor were to experience a psychiatric or a substance-use-related crisis before the CSU opened, there was a variability in the response. Two in the morning Saturday, what do I do? Call the police? Go to the ER? Five o'clock on Tuesday, is that Hillside Center closed? Is it still open? Should I take my grandson there? It was disjointed. We had gaps. We wanted to create a continuity, if you will, in our continuum of care locally. One stop, one opportunity, 24/7, whether you have... The example I give is this, for the people who say, "Well, this doesn't impact me." You could have a grandson that comes home from college. All of a sudden, he's stopped going to class, expressing that he's depressed. What do you do? Now, you would know. You would come to the Crisis Stabilization Unit with him and let our crisis intervention specialists talk to him. Since we opened in June 21... On June 21, the data through September 30 is this. 82 people have been brought to us from various law enforcement jurisdictions. That includes Prescott Police Department, but that's throughout western Yavapai County. So, 82 people who may have been taken to jail or may have been taken to the emergency rooms. They have come to us for crisis stabilization. We created a special entrance for law enforcement. We're about a five-minute drop-off time. That's our goal, in, out, back to policing. Let us do what we do best. During that same period, mid-June to end of September, 665 people total through the doors. One of the positive signs we've seen from some of those people, they've been sharing with us that this is the first time they're reaching out. They are self-referred. They are family-referred. So, what does that mean? To us, that means we're getting to them quicker before that crisis has escalated to police involvement or some other type of suicidal situation. YRMC has been tracking impact on their emergency rooms. In September, before, we added paramedics, and yes, we have paramedics now, to help us do medical screening even better, maybe even divert ambulances from the ED, bring them direct to CSU. Before our paramedics were up and running, ER admissions of psychiatric patients were down about 30% in September, per YRMC data. So, the project is doing what we hoped. We're connecting people to the right level of care at the right time. We're keeping people out of jail. We're keeping people out of the ER. Why are they coming to us? Primarily opiates and alcohol. I don't think that's any surprise to council. And this is whether people are expressing suicidal thoughts, plans, and intentions or not. So, they may be suicidal, they may be not. We can take anybody. We've had parents come to us that just want to talk to a crisis specialist and say, "What do I do with my grandson, who just called me from college saying he's depressed and won't go to class anymore? What do I do with my spouse, who's challenged by depression or addiction, or whatever?" We can be that resource, too. Again, 24/7, we're there waiting for people and for their calls. The number two call is 877-756-4090. And it's on East Ridge Drive. So, if you're headed out of Prescott Valley to the right, really that last commerce center on the way out of town. That's all I prepared, because I know this council will have questions for me. So, I'll take your questions now.
Any questions, comments?
What is the age that you're seeing? Just variety?
Mayor Councilwoman Orr, the center itself has three elements. We have an outpatient crisis intervention part, the lobby, and the offices up front, if you will. Then we have chairs, 10 chairs, that allow us to hold somebody up to 24 hours for longer stabilization. And in the back, eight new psychiatric beds. The chairs and beds can only be utilized by adults, 18 and older. The outpatient area, though, we can do crisis intervention planning and assessment on any age, and we have done that. The ages, they're varied. I didn't run a demographic report for today, but I could get you that if you'd like it.
Be interested.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to thank you for all the work that you're doing and the tremendous work it took to build the program that you have today. This is a tremendous need in our community, and we really are glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Wilcox, it was an enormous effort, an expensive effort. And we are a qualifying tax credit charitable organization for those watching and listening today. If they'd like to support this project, we'd welcome that.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. It sounds like a very noteworthy effort.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda.
Item A, Approval of Draft Minutes for the meetings listed on the agenda. Item B, Approval of Consent to Assignment of Airport Lease Agreement for E2 Hangar from MH Properties LLC to Broken Wing Holdings LLC, and Approval Amendment Number Four. Item C, Approval Payment to Application Data Systems Incorporated for Fiscal Year 2018. Item D, Approval of Comprehensive Sign Plan for Mountain Oaks School. Item E, Approval of Assignment of Infrastructure Agreement for Willow Creek Apartments.
Is there any item a councilperson would like to pull for additional comment?
I have a question about item E.
Okay. Do you want to ask your question now?
Sure.
Go ahead.
John, could you explain the advantage to the city in approving this assignment? It looks like we're trading off a big amount for a small amount.
Currently, the smaller amount, $300,000, has been sealed or certified by an engineer in our Public Works Department. So, that's a sufficient amount to cover the remaining work that needs to be done, the remaining public work that needs to get done. The benefit to the city is it's a separate letter of credit that assures that work will get done. Without getting into too much detail publicly, the disadvantage of having the current bond is that there is a dispute between the developer and the contractor, and that bond, that the contractor, the payment performance bond, the contractor provided to the owner developer. This is a HUD project, by the way. If that bond is called into default, then the city would be forced to call its bond into default because they're the same bonding company provided by the contractor. So, in order to avoid... To the city's advantage, in order to avoid having to go through a bond default process on the infrastructure portion, we get a separate and distinct assurance from the owner, this letter of credit, that will assure us that we'll have our work done irrespective of whether or not what happens on the owner HUD contractor side. So, we're kind of now separated out, and that's the advantage. So, if they go into a brawl, lawsuit, litigation amongst themselves, we're out of it. And all we know is we have a sufficient financial assurance to get our infrastructure completed.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 9A through 9E.
Second. Do you have a motion, a second vote, please? Steve, you're double on it. Billy? You're doubled up, too.
There we go. Sorry. I'm decorating for Christmas. What can I say? It's not... Turn me about yes, and it's... Oh, I need to turn the no on.
There we go.
Got it. That's how often I do not use no. What can I say?
Passes 6-0.
Okay, good. Thanks. Move on to liquor license agenda.
10A, Person-to-Person Transfer. Mayor and council, this item is consideration for a person-to-person Series 7 Beer and Wine Liquor License for Pizza Hut located at 1231 Iron Springs Road. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and being recommended for approval. There have been no public comments, and the applicant was not able to attend today.
Is the applicant here?
No.
No?
He was not able to attend.
Any question, comments on this from the council? Any from the public? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second vote, please.
Passes 6-0.
Do we have a second motion?
Mayor, I move to approve a recommendation for liquor license application number 07130027 for a person-to-person transfer for a Series 7 Beer and Wine Bar Liquor License for Pizza Hut LLC, DBA Pizza Hut, location 1231 Iron Springs Road.
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second vote, please?
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Move on to regular agenda.
Item A, Approving Amendment with Frontburner Media.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. John Heiney, the Tourism Office. Have before you a suggested amendment to a contract with Frontburner Media. The contract was originally put in place in 2013, and Frontburner Media has been working primarily doing public relations and social media work for us since 2013. Heather Herman, the principal of the company, is here today. I'd like to say that Heather has proven herself over the last few years. Even before my arrival here, I was doing good work. You might note that back in July, we received an award from the Arizona Office of Tourism for our Take Another Day campaign. That was Heather's work in that. What I found when I arrived here earlier this year is that there's a very robust marketing plan that goes along with the Office of Tourism, which was managed by the previous director. As I came in to learn all the complexities of this, I brought Heather on board to counsel me on that. And Heather's really been doing that work with the office in addition to her duties from this current contract. So, really, we expanded her scope of work back in April. She's been doing this for us, gradus up till this point. But I think, first of all, we'd like to proceed with extending the contract and formally expanding the scope of work for her to assist us with the development of the marketing and advertising plan in addition to public relations and the social media that she's already doing. Heather is here, and we actually have a presentation. This is something that we gave a couple of weeks ago to the Paha, the Prescott Area Hospitality Association. It's a good overview of some of the work that we're doing with the new marketing plan and some of the... and some of the return on investment that we're getting from that. So I will turn that over to Heather.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. Normally, when I start a presentation like this, I let people know that I have both a ten-year-old and a smartphone, so I'm used to constant interruption. So feel free to ask me a question at any time. We're working on that at home. So you have heard for the last few years what the marketing and public relations plans have been for the Prescott Office of Tourism, and I will tell you that I'm excited about what we have moving forward because we're being much more strategic with it. Instead of looking at what we've always done and having this attitude of, well, we've done that before, let's go ahead and do it again. Well, instead, we're really looking at why are we doing it and what are we getting from it to make sure that it's worth every penny that we're spending. So you'll see up on the slide that we're really looking at metrics, at click-through rates. We want to know that people are being driven to the website, that they're there for a purpose, that they're looking at the right information, that they're checking on room rates, that they're looking at the event schedule, but they're also signing up through our email database and our server so that we can then target them and reach out to them based on seasonality, based on events, what's happening in Prescott. And we're also looking at our target markets. You know, having had some of the Buxton data in hand to look at where, obviously, our target markets are coming from, it's our drive markets of Arizona. We know that. But what's growing and what's coming on the horizon, we'll show you that in a couple of slides. And then piggybacking off of the Arizona Office of Tourism, we call them A O T, what their co-op advertising campaign is and how we get to participate as a rural destination, social media, but then having a theme-based calendar and a P R approach that is based on months and themes so that we can target the press by that, and then having campaigns that are all our own that have never been done before. So our strategy and our purpose, you know, it's time to use what we've got and to make the most of it. And we are Arizona's Christmas city, and it's time that everyone knows that. I think that it's been tried before, but this year, we have a whole campaign wrapped around that. We're actually, if you see Key Magazine, that's a statewide publication, we actually are now going to be on the cover of that for the November-December issue. It's all about Prescott, Arizona's Christmas city. We have true west, real adventure, and I can tell you, having traveled the world representing Prescott, that's what people want. They want that true west, real adventure experience. They want all things Cowboys. They want Whiskey Row. They want everything that Prescott represents. And we can show off our assets by highlighting everything, the western, the culture, the heritage, everything. We're taking advantage of the tools that we've got, not investing more than we need to in things that don't make sense, but really putting the money where we know it'll get the best return. And our markets, based on all of Arizona, but then also that Buxton data, like we mentioned, with the direct flight from L.A. to Prescott, that's our new up-and-coming market that we're focusing on. Chicago is in the top five for the state of Arizona, and it's an emerging market based on that Buxton data. And then internationally, Canada, Germany, but actually all of Europe, and then China. And a lot of people, when they hear China being mentioned, they think of busloads coming through and them taking your lower-end motels and eating all of your free breakfasts, but that's not what we're going for. We're going for the F I T visitors, and those independent future travelers, they spend, on average, $7,200 per person when they come to the United States and visit our state. They spend that much money in a week, so I think we'd all welcome them with open arms. These are just a couple of the samples of advertising that we have representing Arizona's Christmas city. The one on the right is actually a full-page ad that we're running in Key Magazine, and it has editorial to go along with it, and it's also going to be splashed on their website. And then on the left, you'll see some of these are going to be used through TripAdvisor, L.A. Times, and actually on A B C fifteen. So the co-op program, I know we've talked about that before, and A O T came up with that to help rural destinations, and there's a maximum investment per destination of $50,000. And right now, we're at about $49,700 and some. We bought as far as we could get into, and we're taking advantage of it to buy into things that we can't afford on our own. So they match us dollar for dollar. So we put in that money, they match it dollar for dollar. We have now a TripAdvisor campaign that's longer than we've ever had, more markets than we've ever been in before. And then some of the print areas that you'll see, San Diego, L.A., makes sense for our fly and drive market. WestJet, AAA, they just contacted us today, and they're actually working on a whole Prescott piece about downtown Whiskey Row, the historic aspect of it. Arizona Highways, that Arizona Highways piece on its own, if we wanted to buy one of those full-page ads, you know, they only take two ads per issue, and that ad can run you about $4,700 for one ad, and we get that lower than half price. And we also get email sign-ups through these, too. So our own campaigns, you heard me mention L.A. Times, A B C fifteen. We also have the Arizona Republic. We have a campaign that launched with them in August, and it takes us through the wintertime. So we know that it can be kind of a shoulder season. Once the holidays end, we need to start working on that January, February time. And even if we don't get people to come necessarily in those times, but if they start planning their trips and moving forward from the end of February on, that can help us pick up some business during those shoulder seasons. And you'll see advertising on there like you've never seen before. We've got push-down ads that are going to take place in November to promote the Christmas city. And what we mean by push-down ads is basically everyone in the whole Phoenix market within that radius, Phoenix, Gostelmeza, Glendale, all of it, when they're on a mobile device or their iPad or on a desktop or a laptop, and they open up Arizona Central, our ads are going to push through for them. First thing they're going to see is Arizona's Christmas city. They can click through, come right to our website. If they miss it and they're looking on other pages, guess what? Those ads are going to pop up again. They're going to hear about what's happening in the Christmas season, what's going on. And it's going to be a pretty, I think it's going to be a pretty substantial takeover, and I'm excited to see the metrics on it because we get full reporting every month on that. And then L.A. Times is the same. We're doing an iPad takeover with them right now that lasts through November. And then you can see, I don't have to read them to you, but some of the different things that we're doing. Excuse me. And our target age, you may have heard before that, and by reading the Buxton data, that our demographic kind of skews a little bit older, so like the sixty-two and higher seem to be our higher market, but guess what's growing the most? Twenty-five to fifty-four. And through that Buxton data, we can see that he has a chance to grow even more if we invite them to come and visit. So that's what we're doing through some of our targeted advertising. And these are just some of the samples of ads that we've got running. So picture these like desktop size or laptop size or iPad size. They're compelling, they're beautiful, they make you want to know more. Now, the P R portion of it, that is where you get the best bang for your buck because it doesn't take that much money to invest in. And if we can get a journalist to come, like right now, as an example, with Ann, she's got this group that's coming through with the Arizona Office of Tourism tomorrow that's called Million Dollar Views. That's their whole focus, that's their theme. So they're coming through here to focus on where they get the million-dollar views in Arizona. They were in Sedona last night, they're coming to Prescott tomorrow night, they're in Cottonwood tonight. So it's a chance to showcase the whole destination to journalists from Switzerland, Mexico, China, Canada, U.K., and the United States. It doesn't cost us to participate, but what we have to do, what Ann has to do, is reach out to all of the partners in the community and find out who can host them, who can take on that cost to have them stay so that we can get some extraordinary coverage from it. So I would guess, just working with the Arizona Office of Tourism and kind of gauging it and wanting to be a little bit conservative with how much we think we're going to get in ad value, right now, we're at about the $500,000 mark. By the time we get all of those stories turned in from those journalists from all over and what the impressions will be and what it would cost us if we wanted to run an ad the size of that story, we'll probably be sitting at about $500,000 worth of ad value. And I wanted to give just a few samples of what we've done just this year and what the impact has been. So when you advertise in Sunset Magazine, you know, a full-page ad could take a lot of money. It's a lot. I've done it before, and you don't want to do it just once either, so you want to do it about, you know, twelve times, and then that will take about a million dollars' worth of your money if you want to put editorial in there with it. So when you get mentioned in a piece like the one that we did in the spring for Prescott in one of the twenty-best value towns, it's about five million readers and then $110,000 in ad value, but then we don't even count how many times they repeat that on their website and how many times they repeat that on social media and how many hundreds of thousands of people it reaches on Facebook when they repost it and share it. So the reach is extensive, and it takes our time and our effort, but when it comes to the money that's being put into it, you know, it's a nominal fee because it's our time that we're investing, but we're not having to drop money in advertising dollars into it. And I just wanted to make sure that you know who our team is and that we're all in this together, and I have to say, having worked with the tourism team for years, this is probably one of the most cohesive teams I think I've ever worked with in the state of Arizona. They're supportive, and I think it's going to show for all of you in the months to come with a real return on investment. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, comments on the council?
Well, I have a comment, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Heather, John, Wendy, Ann, thank you for all you've done. It wasn't too long ago, we were sitting here discussing whether or not we wanted to do the Buxton contract, and we did do that, and we got some really good information. And Michael, since you've been on board, you've redone our tourism and economic development. I just think what we've seen as a result of that is absolutely amazing, and Heather, you're a big part of that. And so we appreciate you being with us.
Thank you very much. It's an honor.
Counselor Maschika.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's great to know that you're going to be capitalizing on the fact that Prescott is Arizona's Christmas city and not Arizona's tractor pole city. And so, you know, it's kind of funny because sometimes, you know, you can't see the forest for the trees, and I think that this is probably the best presentation in this area of the city that I've ever seen, so congratulations.
Wow. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, comments on the council? Any from the public? I got a thumbs up from Dan, so I guess we can go to a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number two-zero-one-six-dash-zero-eight-two-A-one.
Second. Got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes six-zero.
Thank you. Eleven B.
Master land use plan for Izona Ranch Estates located within the Granite Dells Estate neighborhood.
Mayor and council, this is a request for approval of a master plan for proposed potential subdivision located in the middle of Granite Dells Estates, and I'm going to have to zoom in on this to show you because it's such a small area. It literally is the single holdout parcel within the Granite Dells Estates where the original ranch house was located. It's five and a half acres. The proposed master plan would designate twenty-nine residential lots, those twenty-nine lots roughly around four thousand square feet apiece, which falls about halfway in between the land use, the individual lot sizes and the land use designations that this council recently approved for an amendment to Granite Dells Estates for those lots just to the north, which are smaller, and these lots to the east and south, which are slightly larger than the proposal. So I'm going to zoom out on this one and turn it. I apologize, all the writing's going to be sideways, but this is approximately how the property lays out within that overall master planned area of Granite Dells Estates. So the lots are arranged around a circular loop within the subdivision, very standard approach, with the exception that they've set themselves up for future planned area development subdivision plat, which gives them a lot of flexibility in the way they lay the lots out and the sizes of the lots. They created twenty-seven percent of the area as open space, which is over the trigger that allows them to do the planned area development approach. You have to have a minimum of twenty-five percent in order to do that. They've given us a little bit of idea of lot size and setbacks, shown a little call-out on the plan that just give a sort of general view of how they would fit lots and fit houses on those lots. That's something that normally happens later in the process. It would happen with a subdivision plat and with a rezoning. At this stage, they are not asking for either the subdivision plat or the rezoning. That is a step they could follow at a later date. A land use plan can operate and exist independent of those other two steps. To develop the property, they will have to come back and affect a rezoning through the Planning Commission and through council, and they will have to provide a subdivision plat, again, through Planning Commission and through council. We do have one letter of objection, I think all of you received a copy of it by email today, from Michael Fan, who is the owner and developer of the overall Granite Dells Estates. His concern is that because they've separated out the master plan concept from the normal master plan rezon and subdivision plat that you often see, that there are potential issues with infrastructure and capacities for the infrastructure. I will point out that most of the infrastructure that's required for the Granite Dells Estates subdivision, which will account for about fourteen-hundred total lots, is sufficiently sized to cover any kind of impacts that could occur for a twenty-nine-lot subdivision existing in the center of it. I will also point out that because Mr. Fan's modification that went through this process, again, Planning Commission and City Council recently, that that information was available to this applicant, the Izona Ranch Family Trust, so that they could match up and blend with it and not create a situation where there are incompatible land uses adjacent to one another. We don't see any incompatible land uses. Our Planning Commission reviewed this thoroughly and felt it was appropriate. They made a recommendation in favor of it and passed it on for council's action today. Again, we do have one objection. You have copies of it, I believe, via email. If you don't, I can talk to you more about that. I do have those copies available. I believe we have a representative of the property owner here for the Izona Ranch if you should have questions for them. Otherwise, I will be happy to try to answer any questions you have from a planning perspective. Thank you.
Counselor Blair.
Couple of real quick ones. George, noticing the map and looking on the agenda item, is it a gated community?
Yes, it's proposed to be gated. A clue to that is the entryway that they're showing, providing location here for turnarounds and for gated facility. Some of the existing proposed subdivisions within the Granite Dells Estates subdivision are also proposed to be gated.
I would assume, and I never try to assume anything, but I would assume with it being gated, that it becomes private roads?
That's correct. The city has not had a situation where we've accepted responsibility for maintenance of gated communities. The roadways are private, they're not open to the public, they're not a public responsibility.
And are all the infrastructure water sewer, are they in place at the present time?
No, but they are in progress.
And who is paying for those improvements?
Most of the improvements that will be adjacent to this property are part of the Granite Dells Estates, so it will be Granite Dells Estates master developer.
And it's already been looked at by the fire department for police and fire ingress egress?
Police, fire, and Public Works Utilities have all looked at this master.
And it's been signed off by them?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Wilcox.
George, is there any requirement in our land development code that an applicant submit a planned area development, rezoning, preliminary plat, all at the same time?
No, ma'am. Our requirement is, in order to do a rezoning, you have to have a master plan in place, or you have to demonstrate that you meet, fully meet, all of the requirements of the land use section of the general plan. In this case, they propose the master plan. This has to be in place first. If they submitted all of those steps to you at the same time, we would actually require that you approve the master plan, then approve the rezoning, and then approve the subdivision plat.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on the council? I guess one thing I'd like to ask, you know, the email we got today indicated a number of concerns, and as far as you're concerned, those are taken care of, or they're not a major issue for us?
We believe a lot of the concerns that were expressed by Mr. Fan in his email will actually be addressed and have to be addressed in order to meet city's requirements through the rezoning and the subdivision plat process that has to follow at some point in the future. At this stage, they're just showing a compatibility with the adjacent property and with the development style and pattern that he's established for Granite Dells Estates. So we believe it meets the requirements for a master plan.
So we have further decision elements?
That would be correct. So they would have to come back with a rezoning at a point in the future, and typically, that rezoning would be followed immediately or soon after by a subdivision plat.
Okay. Any comments for the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve MP seventeen-dash-zero- Mayor, I move to approve MP seventeen dash zero-zero-four, a master land use plan for Izona Ranch Estates.
Second.
Got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes six zero.
Thank you. Item C.
Approval of two memorandums of understanding between the city and Prescott Unified School District and the city and Mountain Oak Charter School Incorporated.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. This item is for approval of those MOUs. There's two of them, they're combined because this is a joint project. It's one federal project that involves both Milehead Middle School and Mountain Oak Charter School. The project is being administered by ADOT, using federal funds that were awarded to the city as part of a Safe Route to School Infrastructure Grant. Council approved the grant and the project back in 2013 through council action, when it approved an IGA through a resolution. The grant basically is providing for new sidewalks, handicap ramps, bike ramps, crosswalks, and other related improvements to improve walking and bicycling to these schools. The MOUs are required to set forth the construction, operation, and maintenance responsibility of each party on the school site improvements. And it specifically authorizes the temporary construction easement so that the contractor can get into the schools to do this work. These items have been before the boards, both PUSD and Mountain Oak Charter School, so they saw this last week and approved these MOUs pending your approval. Staff is recommending that these be approved, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Apparently, you did your work. You have a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve memorandum of understanding between the city and PUSD and the city and Mountain Oak Charter School related to the SRTS SF zero-two-eight infrastructure grant.
Second. Yeah, I didn't catch who said the second.
Doesn't matter. Second.
Second.
Guess it was her. I heard three of them, so. Which one do you want to take? Okay, you got it? Okay, got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes six zero.
Thank you. Item D.
Approval of the art donation agreement with the Prescott Area Art Trust for the Cowboy in a Storm bronze statue at the SR eighty-nine roundabout.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Tyler Goodman from the city manager's office, and I also serve as the staff liaison to the Art in Public Places Committee. And last month, the committee passed or approved the letter of intent to donate art from the Prescott Area Art Trust, who has raised funds to donate the life and a half-size bronze replica of George Pippin's Cowboy in a Storm. And again, this is a donation from them, they've raised those funds. Mr. Ed Riley is the bronze smith who's going to be working and casting this piece. And from the city's side of things, we've agreed to pay for the concrete base on which the statue will stand in the roundabout across from the Pippin Museum, and the estimated cost for engineering, labor, and materials for that is five thousand dollars, and that's projected to come from the landscaping portion of that, the Highway eighty-nine roundabout project. The other portion of the cost from the city's side would be to add fine arts coverage to our city insurance policy, which would cover this statue. So the total projected cost is just under fifty-nine hundred dollars from the city. I believe Mr. Kevin Pitts from the Prescott Area Art Trust is here, as well as Mr. Ed Riley, who's the bronze smith. We're happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions, comments from the council?
Well, again, I have a comment. This is an amazing gift to the city of Prescott, and I think, Ed, we all have the opportunity to go see this on October the twelfth.
We have an open house at the boundary at Prescott Valley, and so anyone in the council chambers is welcome to come and take a look at the clay original sculpture that we'll have on display between five and seven o'clock. So bronze smith, if you look it up on the internet, we have an open house, anyone who wants to come to have a look.
And I believe it stands fourteen feet, fourteen feet, and then it will be on top of the base, and I think it's just really important that we recognize Ryan James and Jim Chamberlain and Kevin Pitts and all that they did to put this together for the city of Prescott. It is an amazing gift to our city, so thank you.
I totally agree with what you said. Any public comment? You have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the art donation agreement in place to place the bronze statue, Cowboy in a Storm, in the SR eighty-nine roundabout.
Second.
Got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes six zero.
Well, this has been one painless voting session, which I'm very appreciative of. My final founding father quote today is from George Washington, "Truth will ultimately prevail where there is painstaking to bring it to light." This meeting's adjourned, thank you for coming.